Hi.
Hi, I'm Phil.
How long have you been in your car for?
A couple years, three.
All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Two individuals aren't here tonight. Mr. Collier is away on vacation and Ms. Perry has a personal issue to deal with, so he unfortunately won't be here tonight. The first item that we'll be talking about tonight is our second annual discussion with our state legislators. Unfortunately, San Barbara had to cancel and San Juan Stec had a last-minute personal issue to deal with, but his representative Eli McNabb is here. And of course, we have our state senators, Mr. Tudesco. So we thank them for coming.
Sure. Can I just start off where I wanted to just publicly thank Senator Tudesco halfway now. He provided us for a million dollars. The council approved for buying an engine and a truck in the fire department for our reserve apparatus. We only have the engine so far, so we're waiting for the truck to come in, which is still becoming another 45 days or longer out. Then we'll do a formal event, but I did want to publicly thank that senator.
You're welcome.
Yeah, happy to.
And we'll certainly highlight a few other contributions and partnerships that we've had with our state legislators at the end, like here from them at the end as well, give them an opportunity. So we call this our state budget request, our second annual meeting. Second time, I think, in history that we've actually had legislators here to talk budget requests with us. And we're calling this fighting for our fair share. The reason we're doing that is we'll start out first with aim funding. If you look at aim funding, San Jacinto by far is the short end of the stick. If you look at per capita aim funding, San Jacinto in comparison to cities across the state, I think with the exception of the city of White Plains, we are the lowest per capita in aim funding. And certainly, White Plains has a much different demographic than San Jacinto, where the median household income is roughly three to four times more than that of San Jacinto and the median house value as well under $500,000, whereas San Jacinto is somewhere about $112,000. So a very significant demographic change. So if you look at the per capita aim funding in comparison to cities across the state of comparables to San Jacinto, so we picked Utica, Troy, Rome, Niagara Falls, you'll see that on a per capita level, aim funding in San Jacinto is $171 versus $266 for Utica, $248 for Troy, $280 for Rome, $367 for Niagara Falls. So a significant difference. Now, if you were to put us on par with those cities, you would see that San Jacinto will get over $17 million if you compare it to Utica, $16 million plus if you compare it to Troy, $18 million plus for Rome, and over $24 million if you compare it to Niagara Falls. Even if you just took the average of those, San Jacinto would receive roughly slightly more than $19 million. And, you know, it'll be nice if we'll just accept $19 million. So we're looking at roughly $8 million less than what other communities get. And the question I think we have to ask is why aren't we receiving our fair share in this? San Jacinto is comparable to all these cities. The data is publicly available. And the question is, what can we do to see if we can get on par with these? If we were to have this $8 million funding, we would have a 19% tax cut that we could provide residents of the city. Think about that, 19%. That would be significant. And so what we're asking for is a recalibration. We believe the aim system is broken and recalibration is necessary and past due, and we would hope that we can come to fight for our fair share in that. Secondly, casino revenue. Now, when the casino came to San Jacinto, Rivers Casino and Resort had an agreement where it shares its revenues with the cities, towns, and villages that neighbor us. That includes Saratoga. Yet Saratoga has their own casino, but they don't share their revenues with San Jacinto. Why isn't this happening? Why is San Jacinto getting a short end of the stick as far as revenue goes? Third, we're seeking, and this isn't just for San Jacinto, this is across the state, an increase in CHIPS funding. As I'm sure you're well aware of, municipalities across the state, the roads are disreare. They're a vital piece of quality life issues for residents in the state. They're significantly important for economic development. And the roads, we need money for roads. So this isn't just a San Jacinto request, this is something we are asking, maybe you can get on board with your colleagues in the legislature, to increase CHIPS funding because this is an across-the-board increase and an increase for all, yes, San Jacinto there increased as well. On the same level, one of the issues is handicapped accessible sidewalk intersections. Now, while we're not disputing this in any form, there are individual places where it doesn't make sense. So for example, at the intersection of Off-Road and the Cross Town, there's really no sidewalk there, but there is that state-mandated handicap accessible piece, ramp. If an individual in a wheelchair were to go up that ramp, it can be a liability in the sense of there's no continuous sidewalk there. They could end up in a situation thinking there's a sidewalk, go up, and hurt themselves. You know, we're asking that states, that the cities and villages be allowed to take some of this initiative into their own hands because it doesn't make sense for us to be a cross-the-board mandate. But if the cities know better as to where these sidewalk ramps are necessary, and you should hopefully trust the cities to do the correct thing. Police body camera storage. This is very expensive. The city is bringing this initiative forward. Our police department has done a very good job researching what is the appropriate body camera to use, but it's very expensive. Body cameras can produce upwards of 10,000 hours of video per week. And if you double the quality of that video to 1080p instead of 720, that's not double, but improve the quality, the cost will double for storage space. And typically, these pieces of information are kept anywhere from 13 months onwards. This doesn't even account for the cost of retrieval and labor costs, which is very expensive, as I'm sure you're aware of. So we're looking at storage costs reaching somewhere $2 million plus per year. The costs are actually causing municipalities across the country to turn away from body cameras. And I think we all see the benefit in having body cameras on our police, but the storage costs are incredibly expensive. And if this is going to be something that we want as a society and we want as a state, then we're asking for some help in terms of paying for those storage costs. Our recreational funding. That's not in the package, unfortunately. So we're looking to see if we can give $250,000 for our advisory committee. They've done a great job in revitalizing our parks. You've all been participants in that, a key player in the revitalization of our parks. We've seen significant improvements in our A-diamond and, you know, the type of facilities we have in our parks. And we know that the park system in San Jacinto is tremendous. I mean, it's really something that we should all take pride in and the improvements that with your help that have been made have made significant contributions to the quality life of our residents. So we're asking for a little bit more help to continue moving the progress forward. Lastly, unfunded mandates. We're seeking your help in the removal of three. In particular, funding for school crossing guards. General Municipal Law Subsection 208-A authorizes cities and district police departments to provide their school crossing guards to control vehicular traffic, protect children from going to and from school. However, schools don't have any power to designate, authorize, or appoint school crossing guards. And a school district, as the comptroller said, may neither employ school crossing guards nor contribute to the expense borne by a municipality which employs them. So local governments may hire, supervise, and pay for school crossing guards, but we see this as unfair to burden that, to shoulder that burden alone. So we're asking for the ability of school districts to help pay for the expense of crossing guards. And again, this is an across-state ask. This would be General Municipal Law Subsection 208-A. Secondly, local records management. Local municipalities are required by state law to retain and manage an immeasurable number of documents, and this really requires a significant expense of time and money. In 1989, the Local Government Management Improvement Fund was created to assist municipalities in complying with the mandate and to improve local government privacy management. That money is collected by county clerks on every deed and mortgage filed in their offices by local citizens, which is then distributed back to local governments through competitive grants. So we're asking that the state not balance its own budget deficits by using money directly collected by and for local governments. And lastly, disparity in charges for vital records. The amount by statute which can be charged by local offices surveying statistics documents such as birth and death records was set $10 in 1991. In 2003, the state raised that fee to $30 without a corresponding change for municipalities. As a result, the municipality does all the work to grade the record, but the suburb state keeps the money. So we're asking that legislation be enacted that allows all municipalities to charge up to the same amount as the department helps for issuance of vital records. This is the least regressive method to support the costs associated with vital records management. And local governments have limited revenue sources, but we need to upgrade our scanning and indexing software to prevent obsolescence and pay for annual maintenance costs. So it's important that the state find no cost ways to enhance our ability to generate additional resources. And then just a little bit of update and get to thank you. Last year, we asked for park funding and you stepped up in a major way. And we want to thank you publicly for that. Certainly, you've been highlighted for the contribution for the fire truck, but also we, all our state legislators, have stepped up in funding for our parks. We see our A-diamond turning into one of the premier baseball fields in the Northeast. We have our music haven, which has been revitalized, and we see the tremendous music that comes in every summer and the number of visitors that come in our central park. And many other improvements in our park system, which we want to thank you for, for providing our funding. You've been tremendous partners, Senator Tudesco, Assemblyman Stec in San Barbara, wonderful partners with us, and we hope that that continues. And also the economic opportunities zones, which hasn't really received the attention I think it deserves. We ask for your support in naming several areas within the city as an economic opportunities zone. Those were approved, and they're making a long way in helping improve the lives and incomes and the quality lives of many of residents in our city. So we want to thank you for your help in those two areas in particular. And lastly, just want to thank you for the continued support, the wonderful partnership we have with all of you, and we look forward to a good relationship going forward. So without giving each of you an opportunity to comment or ask questions.
I actually have a question first. Did I miss this information being shared prior to this meeting?
No, because it was, unfortunately, I had to work. And so we got it down low with, like...
Okay. I just, because I just want to make it known that I had no idea we were going to be discussing any of those things with our state legislators, so using "we" makes me a little uncomfortable because that leads to the fact that you're speaking on behalf of the entire council, and I wasn't aware of any of this. So I just, just a little point of clarification before we go forward.
Sure. Senator Tudesco.
Well, sometimes the more things change, the more they stay the same. I remember part of the reason why I wanted to leave the city council and go to the state of New York is because of all these mandates you're talking about. And there's 212, oh, 213 legislators in both the Senate and Assembly, of course, the governor. And these are things that I can work on and my colleagues can work on, but they're difficult to move sometimes because you have such disparity in terms of regions of the state, different between suburban, rural, suburban. My district's 4,000 square miles, as you know. It goes from the city of San Jacinto out to Hamilton County, where I could check against what bears and people, there are no election candidates there. It's one of the biggest geographic counties, but 4,000 people live there as opposed to what we face here in the city of San Jacinto. So that is why I think I tried with the school district and with the municipality to go after my own funds when they were available. Now, as you know, the dynamics have changed out there. So collectively, what we've got to do for Upstate is draw some attention to the needs that you're showing right here. And I think we were pretty good when we had a check and balance in the majority in the Senate. Now it's 100%, as you know, one voice, one political affiliation from one region of the state. That's where representative democracy is worth now. So what we have to do is, I think, we have to convince both parties collectively, Democrats and Republicans, to work together for some of these things you're talking about. Now, there's a city organization, I think you're a part of that organization, that meets and talks about these things. Individually, one city's not going to move many of these things that relate directly to them. If you can partner with that organization, for example, you talk about CHIPS. Every year, we work hard, give more money. We know how important the CHIPS formula is for individual municipalities. But you know myself and Assemblyman Stec have a bill called SWAP, which I passed in the New York State Senate last year. It would be a sister program to this because I'll tell you what, we can continue to give you more money for roads and bridges, but when your sewer and water lines collapse with the weight of those new roads and bridges, you're just putting good money after bad. So there is a need for roads and bridges in our top line, but the subway level is over 100 years old and dates back to the Civil War. When I was on the city council, they gave me the job of mitigating that system back then. I was the one who got to buy a TV camera back then, which was very innovative, and tried to go through the entire sewer system and start a maintenance program for the city of San Jacinto. And I got to start that program. That's not easy to do. The comptroller says we're going to need $20 or $30 billion over the next 10, 15, 20 years just to catch up in what the municipalities on our subway system. In terms of the mandates, the property tax cap is very popular, okay? We're the highest taxed state in the nation, high property tax. But when we did that, the governor and I think the legislature collectively promised to do something about mandate relief. Right now, I think we hear crickets as it relates to mandate relief. We haven't done much. In fact, we just passed a bill that says municipalities and counties are going to have to do nine days of early voting and be a constitutional vote on whether you do same-day registration. That's fine, but there was no money put into that bill when it passed on the floor of the Senate and Assembly, and I haven't seen any money right now. In terms of aim funding, well, you see what the governor wants to do to at least the villages and towns, and I'm not sure the formula is not even up to the level you're talking about. I'm not sure it's still at the level that you once had, and he's looking to find $2.3 billion to catch up with the deficit we have right now. So I do understand all these needs. I'm happy to take them with my colleagues and discuss them with the leadership out there. I'm very sensitive to mandate relief, and I understand it. I understood it back when I was a city council person, and I understand it especially now with some of the things that we're trying to do. We could all create a perfect world. We could all sit around, and sometimes I think that's what happens at the state with us. The governor thinks about it, the legislative leaders think about it, elected officials individually think about it. They come up with great ideas, but you have to have the funding for those great ideas. And sometimes, a lot of times, that doesn't come forward. So I'll do the best to bring these ideas to my fellow colleagues. I'm sure they'll get a copy of this themselves, and maybe we can meet collectively together to, you know, we should probably hone in. Are these city order most important, or is there something that is most important? One or two things that would be most important for us to concentrate on because we're not going to... I'm very fond of the governor. He is going to give us the budget, and he's going to work very hard to do what he wants to with that budget. And if we want to get something in there that makes a difference to city legislators, it'd probably best for us to hone in on a couple of very important things.
We will provide you that information.
Probably aim money would be one of the most important things.
Just even a recalibration on San Jacinto's efforts portion. That would be a welcome change.
Have you talked to the governor's people over a period of time of why it is so substantially hollowed out here as compared to other municipalities?
Other communities, there was a more strict formula in that. Other communities had gone through periods of distress or had other issues where the legislature came together and upped funding for Niagara Falls or helped you there, helped other, San Jacinto's never had that.
There are individual legislators lobbying.
Correct.
And were able to get it into question. Let me have your work with Mr. Stec and Mr. San Barbara. And I'm from a little bit different position right now, but we still can speak out, use the belief of it. And hopefully, see if we can do something like that.
Well, we certainly appreciate it. As I said, we have good relationships and partnerships with the city and our leaders in the state, and thank you for whatever efforts you can make. Hopefully, that will turn into the office.
One thing I know for sure is we're going to have to speak loudly for Upstate New York. I think we have to draw attention to our needs. I know the leadership now, they said, well, we're going to do what's right and we're going to help the entire state of New York. But I think we have to make sure that really does happen, whether Republicans or Democrats. We have to speak up for where we're at, where we're from, who we represent, and I think that's going to be important in this budget year.
That's part of the reason for us meeting, so thank you.
Sure.
Mr. McNabb.
Well, I will definitely bring this to Phil, and when there's a request for legislation like there is here, we'll see what we can do. I know that Phil does mean with this, within the majority, there is an Upstate Caucus, which I think that, you know, these similar cities of Upstate across the state have similar problems. And he can bring his, some of these issues up in that. Phil has a bill that would address some of the revenue raising aspects that are needed to fund our cities fully. And I'd just also like to say that there is, will be some savings with the consolidation of the primaries that they're going to have. It may offset some of the early voting costs by only having one primary day. That's just a little aside. But yeah, we'll bring it to Phil, and as always, we'll do what we can, and these doors always open, and work well with the senator and the senator's office.
One of the things that, you know, he's talked about is this internet tax, which is probably important for parity for our retailers and businesses here in the counties. But I'm not sure that makes up for the $60 million in aim funding for some of our municipalities. And he's kind of going back and forth, we'll either pay for that or we'll pay for the nine days of early voting. That's just putting another mandate and taking another tax and paying for a mandate instead of really funding from the state of New York. I think that money could be helped in some of the things you're talking about, the money the county gives out to cities, towns, and villages. If we want nine days of early voting and it's mandated by the state, they should pay the municipalities for nine days of early voting and come through with the aim funding we've had in the past.
Well, we don't want that because if you look at our source, it's not very good. We want parity with our other towns and cities around the state, so at least you didn't want to do that in the past. Yeah. So, no, we understand, and certainly, our priority is to look out for the best interest of the city as well as when you were on the city council. Sure, there's plenty of efficiencies and money that can be found in the state budget, and we want to thank you for your partnership. It's really been a very good partnership. We need to work together to move forward, and we've done that well, and hopefully that will continue. And I want to thank you for taking time to come out tonight. And really, I want to thank you also for the couple of things, not the couple of things, but the many things you've done for us as city and residents of the city. So thank you very much for your time, and we look forward to working on this with you in the future and hopefully see some results. And come back next year with some more things.
No, we're trying to make the case for that aim money. It's pretty obvious. I don't see why we can't make that case. Eventually, there would, as far as the board houses out, so.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Hi, how are you? From Mr. McNabb. You mentioned, is that bill of the state, if you tell us the number of the bill, or is that not something that's real...
The stock answer?
Yes.
I do not have a very committed memory, but I can certainly get that to you.
That'd be great.
Within an hour.
All right.
I could look it up right now.
Oh, all right. That'd be great. Thank you.
I believe it's been reintroduced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, sir.
I also want to take a second to thank my colleagues and the finance committee for their assistance with this and helping put this together. Kind of a motion to adjourn the finance segment.
Actually, before you adjourn, Mr. Calmey, I would ask that respectfully, in future, when we're going to put something forward publicly as a council, as seven people that are elected to this table, that we do so in consensus with one another. I'm still very uncomfortable that this is presented without any of my now job well-written document, again, when you're speaking on behalf of the council. So I'll ask that in future, it shares, it is shared with the entire council for their prioritization and their input.
We'll certainly do our best.
Thank you.
On a second.
Second, I'll leave it. Call for a public safety. We have a lot of developing and custody of all the bodies connected to San Jacinto construction. In terms of the toll, we're... So, my... What am I going to do?
Um, there's a little bit different than we normally ask for. We sounded, entering into a random, random standing with a couple of jurisdictions. We have consolidated or actually taken on our CAD system through our, via the communication center, which is a county dispatch center. With that, we now have, we should have did that if you would, if I had better word, with other agencies.
with other agencies. This document here provides us a way of sharing information with the county police department, office police department. We also foresee some in the future, other, other opportunities coming on, just so that we can look at their CAD Armus information, and they can look at ours. It's pretty generically specified in their first year's open papers, grant funding, which is already secured by the city's county, you know, last year. But we use towards our Armus system, and then here 2020, I've got, I mean, these values are responsible for going, so we don't, we're a real hospital city at the point, on this offer that we're granting, that's already this year. But in the future, it's probably, we're not very. Any questions? Could I support Phil?
So, um, after, what do you know what that cost to me after 2020?
We have, it'd be $3,000 for each of these jobs. It's not large, but it's just $3,000. And that's, that's quite a high end, probably $2,500.
Oh, okay.
It's not. This isn't here, so it needs to solve together, but there are some questions we need to support.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? We have one more.
Move that.
Second, all in favor? Hi, thank you. Any other questions for public safety? Second, all in favor? Hi, thank you.
During the tour, the administrative efficiency committee, the first item is creation of a youth advisory board, final review, to determine these questions. How is this a?
The point, I guess, for the mayor's appointment, it's designated as a city employee. Uh, yeah, that be deleted and just be the mayor's appointee. So could it be a retiree during our time? Could you want maybe somebody else in the community to come in and add some level of expertise or value to the overall thinking? Just ask for that flexibility.
Are there any objections? I have a motion to approve with the stated change by the mayor. Second, all in favor? Next on the agenda is the quarterly affirmative action report with Mr. Gardner. And the lobby's walking up here, and I'd like to congratulate him on an excellent event that we had this past week with the graduation that he, of his, I believe, the first graduation, correct? And it was an excellent event, well-attended, and lots of proud graduates. He's doing great things in the city, and we're seeing lots of changes happening, so congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, thank you. Thank you for the comments and support, and also be for our good comment and talk to you about where we are with our action department, with our program. First section of affirmative action, we discussed it over the two, will the RSCS, why the faculty? And one of the things that I, I've been talking to Carl and Mungo, but we really need to seriously think about making some changes, to put some teeth to that, that's really going to make this happen. And one of the things that seriously we need to do is force these companies to put a thought on a realistic utilization plan at the time they spend this, because you got some of the companies that, you know, submitted a number, you know, based on, you know, reaching out, participation, other companies, you know, a lot more, and they say, okay, we'll work on it. But once the contract is out, you're looking at catch-up and mail catch-up, and this is the case with DCI, this has been just a frustrating mess there in Martin, doing it for us, so payments on, and all kind of crazy, making time that we have to do, and then of course. So I'm suggesting that, one, that we, if these contracts, these bids don't come in with a properly addressed utilization plan that we deem that is, is not, is not supposed to be that responsible there, to start that off. And then it makes it a more realistic approach on the one side, where we can get these requests in, but if they might have to expand, we can perhaps see what they are aiming, start dealing with this. But this has been such a preparation, you know, that, and I think it's something that we can deal with, and we need to, you know, start taking this seriously, to make that happen. And we make, and these, your lobby, too, they want to, so we, we can have these conversations. But that's, that's one thing that we deserve to do to make that happen. And I guess, and then we did have, during several, called combinations, our first year program, we did have a fabulous graduation and technical reception and armament. I'm not sure how many people were there, but I know a lot of them, and I understand about people, you know, that were in attendance. But we did successfully have thirty-two students go abroad and receive recognition, and, and nineteen individuals, and these are, I remember, the whole lot, and both sex programs that have come from our city, and typically ordinary, never have an opportunity to do anything, but here's the first time that they've received anything, any type of recognition, compliment, or anything like that, and they put in the work, you know, need to be students, on the construction, skills training piece, it was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for, a lot of these, well, one of these are digital students that you were trained, so the age range was from nineteen to fifty. But it was really a great illustration of what I can do, you know, dealing with, you know, the high department, you know, dealing with the department, you know, all those new deals on the regular basis. This is what it came, but they were very, very successful in terms of making it, making it over the top, the one that they, not all of them got to do it, but the one that did make, they were so proud, you know, and, and I think, you know, a young lady that's forty years old, and then at school, they never come as much, whatever, and just being able to do stuff like math, and, you know, understanding what the construction process is, and all sorts of things, and they were so proud in terms of what it's been, and people there to see it, to see the pressure on their face, how proud these men were, what we did. So we really did as well as the city, to show that we're letting out, you know, the thing about, and that's what we're sold out. And I feel we'll go along with that. This is basically, I guess, the end of, this is the first step, kind of, trying to, and we talked about in the beginning, that we wanted to go looking for now. Next step is, we're getting ready to go into the part of, because we have a community college, where they spoke that want to move forward, move on to the next town, then I have direct entry into the construction program, where they also got a community college, so they can go, you know, one year to the program with, you know, car payment, high end, or whatever, or if you want to, two years to the program, where they go to, we're free for preparation, you know, business ownership, thing, or, oh, my. So that's significant in the sense that they, the costs are going to be covered, because they're overcoming the gap in demographics. The costs are going to be completely covered, so to what you plead, all they're going to do is just get on there, and they have access to these fabulous opportunities. And then back on Thursday, the director for the S9A student destruction is coming in to be class, so the role is playing out, and despite what it looks like to them, what is, and, and basically, they made vision of what the value for us are. But essentially, the agreement is all students that please the program have direct access into the program, and they want to cover the costs. So that's what the fabulous opportunity for us, and, and for us, too, and, and our city. So we're very, very proud of that. And also, we'll know and handle that, always, we're developing our relationships. As I mentioned, we've got the agreement with the career council, so that's why we've been moving forward. But, but in recent months, we're working on other areas. We have now, we're sort of finding out the deal agreement with, with DRC, for example, how we can become, as a city, become a menace for their CBL, their training program that they launched out. So for region one, we want to be a hub, to sort of place those students, their training, to give them a CBL license. Now, a reminder, this is important to us, because when you look at the OGS department, just by having to put you down there as a lead or acquire a CBL license. And it's a huge barrier for a company, because it's a multiple can for to get, I don't know, I don't know, give it or whatever, but it gave us not to, put it into that program, free charge, they get the training, and now you got enough skill set that they can offer when it comes to the city employment and those types of positions. And the other agreement that we're working with is with the part of the labor, they come at us on a couple of fronts, and a lot of it's because, you know, the idea of what we're doing, you know, thus far, but again, they want a part of us to go after grants and things, and train, and sort of enhance, you know, where we are. So we're getting a lot of recognition from a lot of different agencies, and a lot of them on the state side, which is, which is very, very significant, and we're very, very proud of. So, so again, you know, DRC was here in this building, you know, a few weeks ago, the part of the area has been here on a couple of fronts, and now they're saying, so the county and the SJTA program. So again, they want a part of us to go after some grants and things, again, to enhance our business. Because again, what they're seeing is, they've been having fun to do things, although they have not managed to get the result, but they have not had the pride of mine for the student population, if you will, to make it happen. And then I give you another example of why these relationships are also important to us, because when you look at the resources that are available, in our program, in our training, we just, we all heard about eight students, because they didn't have access to childcare, okay? SEA, SJTA, back here in Broadway, I remember with them last month, and they tell me they were moving, but because they can't spend it on childcare. So yeah, and what is, this, and this is very, you know, this is what happens all the time. So, so with us being able to come together and talk about these things, I think it's going to give us a lot of opportunities to go forward. And then by the mind of we, without opposition, creating childcare, and it doesn't cost it, and it just happens to, you know, it's already going up. And then another part of the training was the construction manager training. And that bill was primarily business and developed in the culture, but again, the problem that we have is, is we're talking about how do we create opportunity, and how do we create enough time to job? You know, we, we have, you know, we create everything, and why, I think we have to do that. We don't have enough business, priorities here to support goals and areas that we have set, and it's going to change the anatomy as you look at the numerous ways that have been imposed by the state, and what kind of mandates, and now to the municipalities, and how do we deal with that? So it's, it's on us to really build that, build that pool. And, and by doing that, another thing happened, is, again, it's relative to us creating jobs for our citizens. So, so for example, when we talked last year, we first started out this mission, we did with gold and green, and we got ten companies, and we showed them how to get in business, how to really be in business. You think about a plumber, a carpenter, it's a one-person operation, typically starts at two o'clock in the morning, works all day, then comes in at night, try to do paperwork, try to do the documents and stuff. And consequently, as far as, it's not as successful, because, you know, they don't have the resources there, you know, the business is not as sharp as it could be, so a lot of that, and they're just not in terms of being favored on the state. So when I broke that whole six months, we told these guys, we should infiltrate these companies, and we had it filled in fifteen, that you, what you got, what you must have is a backup, but you can't have to work all day, and, and, you know, so getting the dial of course, you need a, you know, escalator to do, you know, that, and creating a job, and also you need a former superintendent to, you know, make the work, so three jobs at each of these companies, a creep out, and you just think about it, before, rather than, you know, a dream, or whatever, but now it's real. These companies, you know, I talked about LMM, you know, like Pat Elect, he was a one person that just started, now he's hired that one person to help him, that's a job he created, or somebody that he had as a, you know, a nice job company, he's insurance, he's getting business, now he's got more work that he wants to do, so now he's working on hiring seven people. But these are jobs that we are creating from scratch, right here, that's literally changing people up. The other thing that's happening is, we just went into a, a memorizing, understanding really the city system. Now, this is potentially huge for us, because assuming typically you're not going to, they won't use anybody. But we, we are, you know, the first one, they say, to design, to put a college within there. So this is, this is, you know, the real deal. And they talk about how do we, how do we help you cultivate development, and you think about, you know, we're looking at other, you know, regional platforms, if you will, but if I can create a job here, connected, colleagues, or whatever, it doesn't happen yet. I want to create opportunities for our citizens that live here. I don't want, I don't want my LMM to have, have jobs, or this, and all those kinds of things. So assuming that, as they're coming forward, they signed the document, the mayor has signed, and now we're ready to move into, and now tomorrow, the twentieth, we have a meeting with the CFO of Sumi, I mean, and we have a meeting with their, their chief of administration, but the whole statewide system, so maybe we see, having another partner here, they turn it up, okay, specifically, what do you view us to do? And some of the things we're talking about is, you know, business centers, and, you know, technology lab, and all of the four pieces that we need to make the businesses happen. So, so that really sort of coming together, bringing this whole thing, you know, full circle. Part of the conversation today, we had a deep agreement meeting this afternoon, and we talked about, we obviously, we go out and raise specific leads to cities, and that one of the things we talked about, we see with all the properties that we got, why couldn't we take a platform and use it as a training, like, want to teach it from, out of your general contractor? We ran a prime, or senior firm to be the mentor, to demonstrate how we made that happen. And then the workforce comes from, of course, we're covering it here, so now you've got two or three things going on at the same time, and why not tie that to the third time home wire program? So now that we're going to work in there, really, this week, of course, a million hours of your little wage, you know, now you're going to be, go ahead, you know, you know, first time home wire. So all coming together, we talked about time that, you know, the cycle really, you know, truly making, making a difference. And last week, I had the honor of participating, both at the Congress weekend, where we were one of the council speakers, talking about what we're up there in the cities, you know, the senator had an hearing on what do these, the impact on the city, and I talked about what that factors on us as a race of connected. And, and when they talk about, you know, all this money out there, and basically, as Senator said, and as John said, it becomes like a, you know, hunt money, man, you got to enter, or whatever. So how do we get to build capacity to address these needs? And that's what the conversation was about, is what do you need as a power? You know, one of the things, you know, I say the technical assistance was tied to what we talked about with Sumi. It ties with the access to capital. We talked, Senator Sanders, who chairs the banking committee for the Senate, he, he shared that, and he has, you know, four, four letters to address, you know, this issue. But also, they want to know how this, you know, impacts us on access to capital, access to bonding, and access to contract, and opportunities to have a good municipality, and opportunities to look at how to get contracts, and give you some, you know, some freedom, and try to hire, bring some of these things down, and all the pieces to, to, it was a fabulous opportunity, the people statewide, knows who we are, beautiful, Roger, everything, you know, want to come down here next month, so, with their, with their, we both talked about how they're doing, and what we're doing, what we're doing on collaborative basis to, to, so. So the, and I know what time it is, but I want to keep it mostly here, so.
Of course.
Four, four times a year.
Sorry, we finished, Mr. Biggins? So first of all, thank you very much. I just can't say how much, how about a fabulous job that you're doing, you know, since, sorry, this is just a couple of years ago, and having, you know, I was at the graduation as well, it was well-attended, and a lot of people were able to graduate, and, you know, on both sides of the road, just doing work and also in the administrative piece. So I thought that was very important, because a lot of times that doesn't happen. And I have to reiterate that, and we, we already had our discussions regarding this, that now that we have people graduating, that have skills, and are ready for the work, we need to make our particular opportunities here in the city, we can change it. So, you know, we talked about this later, and I would. So, you know, we talked about legislation, and I would love to be able to work with my colleagues on that to make sure that that happens because it would be very disappointing for people to go through all this training and then not be able to become employed and into have, being a living wage and be homeless and all the things that you talked about. So, you know, hopefully we can, you know, work together to move that forward. And I just wanted to share with my colleagues that, and, okay, I'm going to say the whole thing because I can never say it right, and we...
And the Association of Women in the United States.
Right, the Association of Women in the United States of New York had their conference hours past Friday, just before the weekend of the line, before the new project. So all the people were here from all parts of the United States. And I have to say that they were really just wanted to talk about what's going on here and that can be used as a model. So we had something really, really wonderful that other people had questions about and it was talked about, talked about how we could be collaborative on different projects. So what we're doing here, other people are looking, and larger cities frankly, are looking at and saying, hey, this is a great thing, how can, how can we replicate this? So I want to commend you on doing that work and we took, we used the average mayor to vote about community and to talk about the wonderful things that are going on here with our permanent action office and also with the partnership. So also with the partnerships that you've been able to create, not just with SUNY and the colleges, but also our client contractors. So again, we do need to, you know, with all this, it would be all for naught if we didn't, then again, again, we create more opportunities for the people that have graduated. So I think that moving forward on the legislation is something we definitely need to do.
That's true, and this is where the report began and also the residual effects out of that, even though the focus is on construction, several things have happened that's related to us in the city that not related to construction at all. You know, that wanted to do hires for code departments that will be working with the city, they want our records. So this is a young lady that went through the program from scratch with all the experience, she got a motion period, all the things, and now she's going to be working for the city as your newest employee. And that's something that's, you know, it sort of comes over, as you get around more and more people, that things are happening, you know, a lot of things, you know, do happen. And another one who worked with a young man, he got into the program, again, just kind of do something because he didn't think it was possible to get into the police department for a second. So he was got a, a guardrail that's got a college degree, you know, got some, you know, got some challenges in background, but I think we'll work with them. But again, this is a potential for us to have a real pocket for us in our police force. And the same thing hold true for work with another young man that's been working, you know, he has here, he was a professional by the fire department. So he had to look at the paraman and then he was showing credit, so he more likely to, you know, get those type of things. And now he get ready to sit for the state exam in March. So as I said, you see how, you know, to keep that activity going and get more and more people to the base, even though we talked about construction, you know, now all of a sudden we got a young man that's got a quality person, but this man, they give it to the fire department. You talk about somebody else who given it to the police department and, and other things. And I think it's just fabulous, you know, there's, and people laugh, and, you know, that's what I'm most, so.
What kind of a project have you started? You have some numbers here for kind of the BCI for the B point two, that all the time. W E, you have seventy, seventy-two thousand for that. Is that a total contract, what, so are you trying to actually?
Yeah, yeah, that's where we are now. And they start out at one point, one point seven million.
So we're, so you're saying this is actual, seven, seventy-two?
Yeah.
So what was the warrant?
One point, one point four.
So is there any area that you can, before you have a contract out here, maybe another call, you say two, or what, to be able to use actual facility?
Absolutely.
So that way you can look at, compare it with other.
Absolutely, because the necessity to do, because what happened if you got, you know, one case where they have a lot, you got another one that they have a lot of, uh, complication.
Yeah, that can give us an idea how we're trying to, in terms of total award and how much, yeah. Yep, I would appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. So we obviously did a really good job in construction by the day and all that. So we did, we reported, talked about the new hires and the new position and the fills. So, but I see that we're still not really getting a lot of minority hires. And specifically, one of the minority hires is, it's a crossing guard, which is a very part-time position. So we're not only, we're not getting along, we're not really hiring, but we're also, it's in a job that, I don't know, ten hours a week, I think that particular one is. So I think, I don't think, I know that's the area that we need to focus on a little bit, a lot stronger. And if we can do construction, I believe that we can do it here. Is there any thought about how we move forward with that?
Absolutely. So one of the things that we're doing now is working with, what else we do with that now, that I've kind of worked with the labor association and the churches and, and so that's been the council to make that happen. More specifically, I've been working with another group and came out as a versus success. We got a group of young men and women came there and they, they just happen to be the pipeline of the community. So you might be advertised by a position or something, you know, depending on, you know, who the audience is, they may have been out here that they have to go to talk to the ass and all those type of things. But we do the email and we talk to about everybody that we see and all those type of things. But with this group, what I'm planning to do now is in April, we want to have a, in the same plan, so, so go see, so a real focus, town hall type conversation by the police and fire department. So that's okay, but we want to have state over in the community and all of these folks that came, if they want part of this, they have, we, we put them in the back to them that they're being the same, we're going to have this conversation, we want you to come in, we want to talk about it, what is it like to get a piece of, what's about to be acquired, and how do you think that happens? And are you interested in it? And any kind of question, have residents from each department there, have their real doubt, not just a job that I think we pass out of fly, we're talking about, we're building us, we both had a hard conversation. And that's what we're going to focus, that's going to be focused on well, and we beat the police to make that happen, that's going to be a big, we'll cross type conversation. Because, you know, I, I do a lot about to know how that way, you don't have this, you don't have that. But, but, but I say, come on, have you applied in, you know, every position in the city is civil search, have you applied? Well, you know, I don't do that, why don't I do that? And also, they need to understand, when you want to be a piece of fireman, they didn't like to go over and apply for the, to leave, it'd be a two-year process. And that's the piece that, from the community perspective, will kind of this, they think this is a rapidly instant type thing, and it's not. There are a lot of things that go along that conversation. I want to look back to my friend who began to say, you, you stay over there too, you can't come and say, well, I have this there, the other one, nobody's applying. They know we looking and all those type of things. So, so that's, that's how I'm going to get more in tune to this community. And I think with this group, we have a great week of doing that, this is the barber shop, the, you know, the hair salon, you know, the small, you know, one of those, I was in church, but, but firstly, I've not gotten a lot of response, but I always expect, you know, from the church, you know, and I get, I understand that. But, but I always know that that will be a natural for people, it's going to take a lot of work, but again, there's got to be a real conversation, because you can't just come here and say, why don't you have this there, the other one, nobody is applying. No, you know, so we got to change that dynamic and then go through what's expected and then we'll, you know, go on.
Thank you, Mr. Eric. I also want to thank you once again, the mayor for your leadership. And as I think was said at the graduation, that this is the model for the nation. Once again, the mayor and the city are leading, so thank you. Motion for adjournment.
I'm motioning. All of your favorites. Hi. I'm one of the city development planning, and first item is the final review for the C D T and taxi orders, and I believe that's under you. Can you tell me?
Sure, I guess I'm ready.
Thank you, everybody.
But this is the final review of the taxi orders. Are there any questions, comments?
I guess I'll make a comment, in fact, that there was a lot of conversation that went on between the city and C D T A, and they listened to the requests that we had, and we were able to lobby for our cab companies to raise the age of the oldest vehicle from seven years to 10 years, so that's a very good thing. And they are, you know, certainly adopting our metering pro, um, process. So, you know, it's good, I'm happy that we have the ability to set fares and it's not going to be perfect for everyone, but I think we really, you know, we met with a room full of representatives from our taxi companies, and I think it was a good legislative process. Like I said, not everybody's going to be happy, but we took, got a lot of input on it, and they made some significant changes, so.
Shall we move on?
Here you go.
Okay, we're ready, we're ready to move this forward then? Have there any other questions? Any questions?
I think that are a question.
So I'll second it.
Call and pay for.
Aye.
Thank you. And next item is the sidewalk replacement program, and that is.
There's, we're finding of opportunities for people coming on speed. We certainly have a large number of people coming on speed in support of this. So I think we are fairly well set.
Questions?
I have actually a laundry list of stuff. Because we, we did hear from one neighborhood, but I also got some Facebook messages and some emails and some phone calls with some other questions. One question, and I remember that we discussed this, but I don't remember where we landed on it. The trees that may hinder the replacement of the sidewalk, who ultimately is going to be the person, who is going to be in charge of the cost of the tree removal? Is that somebody that's the department, city, or the homeowner, or?
That'd be the city.
Okay. And is that in the legislation anywhere right now? I don't, I don't recall.
Usually engineering does that with the sidewalks, so I don't know if we have anything to say.
I just think it might be a good thing to include. I also am being concerned about our debt cap and what the payment repayment plan is going to be, because I know that, you know, we have a debt cap. So if we're guessing at 10 years, or 15 years, or five years, or whatever, what does that look like with our ability to borrow and just what is in place? Has there been something worked out with finances that would show us a safe trajectory of bonding that money and not putting ourselves in position of maybe getting too close to our debt cap? Has that been a discussion at all? Okay. And what's the plan to make sure that we're in the safety zone with regard to that?
We're well within our cap level, so not the amount of money, you know, we're not looking to go over or get near our cap level. So I mean, we work hand in hand and make, bringing their petitions to make sure we don't reach any unsustainable level.
But do we know the amount of years that we're going to ask people to pay back and how that, the cycle of that impacts approaching our debt cap? I mean, this is just one laid out, so it's not a big deal. But if you're talking about, I think you said four miles of roads when we have, or four miles of sidewalks when we have 400, it's obviously going to have to continue to cycle. So have we figured out, have we projected when people need to pay it off in an effort to continue the program going forward so that everybody has a fair share?
No, I just think, no protection.
Okay. So that's something that I think is really important that we discussed before passing it. Another thing that came to my mind is years ago, when the city actually was raising taxes and not reducing taxes, my, I pay my taxes and my mortgage through escrow, and although my taxes went up a considerably smaller amount, my mortgage payment went up over $200 a month to create cushion that the mortgage company felt comfortable with, considering that the taxes were fluctuating. And I ended up needing to refinance my house to reduce my monthly mortgage payment because that $200 was a hardship for me. So I think that bears discussion as we go forward with this also, and how that might impact people, because worrying concern is to the affordability for some of our citizens. And then I still advocate for more than 75% of the neighborhood people to sign the petition. And then lastly, I thought the Gazette made an excellent point, and I'd like us to talk more about putting in a cost relief factor, so that we do have, like, say, an elderly citizen where they simply cannot afford it at $50 or $60 or $100 a month, and it may be the difference whether they can stay in their home or not, if they financially qualify, that we may be able to give them some cost relief from the city as part of the program. I just thought that was a really good solution to a concern that I had. So I'd like for the council to maybe talk about that also before finalizing the program.
Okay.
Oh, no, it's very good. Okay. So my concern also is with the paving and sidewalks, and how that, how that's going to work simultaneously. So I'm going to give you an example, that are, that's in a neighborhood, do, signs the petition, they get everything, they're ready to go, and so they want to do their sidewalks. But they're not on the paving list until, I don't know, two years from now, the paving is, but they need paving, but it's not on the list. So how is that going to be coordinated in terms of making sure that it's done at the same time, so we're not paving and then ripping it up to do something else? How is that going to be coordinated?
Certainly, we work with engineering with their paving schedule, they're fully on board with the sidewalk replacements here. And we can coordinate with them, their paving schedule, and make sure that sidewalks and roads go hand in hand, so the situation you're talking about doesn't happen.
So just to be clear, so you're saying, are you saying that a neighborhood stands up says, we want our done, we get everything done, people, everybody's on board, that part is done, but they're not on the paving schedule? Are you saying the engineer removes the paving, for the streets paving around?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying what we could do, it's possible. Try and coordinate, but it's not a perfect scenario with this.
I understand that, but...
It's also two separate things, the paving and sidewalks, you can do sidewalks to pay that one time, or vice versa, you can pay and then do sidewalks at a separate time.
But it makes more sense if you're doing, you try to do it all at the same time, because you're carrying out all the thing, all that, so it doesn't, you know. Right. So, so, so you're saying that it's not necessarily going to happen at the same time, but possibly maybe is less to go?
Correct.
And I think also that we're, we've got two streets that have petitioned, seem to be broad-based support in it, that we're going to learn from that. They're relatively small deployment, so that putting those in place, actually doing the work, we're going to find out how smooth it is, what the reaction is, are the people, you know, really impressed with it? Are they going to complain about some of the ways that it's deployed? How do you synchronize it again with our paving program, with National Grid, which is always doing utility work one way or the other? And so I see that as kind of a little demonstration project where they've been looking at this for a while, put it in place, do it, and then reevaluate it afterwards in terms of just how effective it was and what people liked or what they didn't like.
Are these the same petition that we originally put in several years ago, or are these new petitions?
Same petition.
Okay. And are we going back to those petitions to make sure that people still live in those homes and?
Yeah, this is the same street.
Okay, well, I didn't remember what you're going to add.
Yes.
Those are the markets we're back and get, um, they get petition on the streets of Philly. This one, when he was here, he mentioned about the four-inch versus six-inch sidewalk, where frighteningly is, are we, engineers, particularly, where required four-inch instead of six-inch?
Yes, the, the.
So I worry about that on the cost.
Yes, that, the costs we have listed are very conservative, they account for six inches. Hopefully, you know, the four-inch is going to be used in other areas, the cost will be lower, you know, help the residents get a quality product at a cheaper price.
Yeah, that was one that I was asking about, because they're all significantly reduced the cost for agents, say, like they... They go in at four inches instead of, um, six inches of the cost.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker. Um, I also want to just talk a little bit about the cost, especially, as I brought it up before, about people who own multiple properties. And now this could be a significant cost to them and they've passed on to, um, to their tenants. Um, generally, this this happens in the lower-income parts of the city, although there's a lot of renters in the side, either. But generally, that's how it, how it happens. So, uh, I really think we need to take a look at how the city can somehow, um, subsidize that for, for, for those homeowners. Uh, even our, the chair of our planning came out and said that, that there's certainly is gonna be impacted and that we should take a look at that. So I think that's something that's, that's extremely important. I don't know if we go to C D funds some way to do that or how we do that. But I think that's going to be something, uh, maybe not for the initial, um, pilot project. But as we start to move into other neighborhoods where there's not as many homeowners, I think that we definitely need to, as we're.
Well, let me just correct you. We're not doing anything. This is a neighborhood initiative, so we're not doing this.
Are we part of the neighborhood? I am.
Right.
So that, that's the way.
We as a city are not doing this. It's a neighborhood bringing it forward.
The neighborhood's bringing it forward, but even if seventy-five percent of the people said to do it and then they're gonna pass all the cost to homeowners, that's my concern. So, and I live in the neighborhood, so I'm hard way. So that to me means wait. So that's the term that I'm willing to use. We're all a part of the city, y'all are here. So I still think we can, in places where people are more renters than homeowners, we need to take a look at how the city can help that group of people to make sure that there's not a hardship, but that they still benefit as part of this initiative.
And so that little improvement that happens with a whole property is generally passed on to renters. Um, so it's nothing unusual. Whether a roof gets done or some improvement of property is, um, generally gets passed to the renter. So this would be a similar situation.
No, I'm hoping to say that renters in the city are already having much difficulty and I know that frankly. And that's something I'm gonna bring to the council very soon. So we don't wanna be changing that. We don't want people to become homeless. That's another issue we have here. So all of this could impact that. So I would say it definitely is passed on. Well, we can't put people in this position where they're having hardships and they don't have places to live with them and their families. So that's a concern. And if that's going to impact that, I will continue to bring it forward.
That's fine. We shouldn't make changes to the voting if that's the issue. Because any vote of movement will add cost to renters.
It doesn't have to, but we can, like I said, I'm bringing forward how that's impacting, um, renters in the city. We'll go forward with that.
So I think, um, with this pilot program, we have two streets that are ready to go. They're going to be sending in new petitions.
I hope to be happy to be ready. They're gonna read.
We have to read. Yes. I said we have two streets interested in doing this and we're going to re, repetition those streets. And I believe they're, they're, um, they were close to ninety percent.
We had a rate of ninety percent at the time the petitions were done.
So I I think, um, we're ready to, to kind of move forward with this pilot program. Um, I do not believe we're getting anywhere near our, our funding cap on, our lending cap, um, based on these two programs, on these two streets. So, um, I think we're ready to move forward with this then. I'll call for my.
I will.
All right.
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll second it. On favor? Okay, um, I wanted to bring up, uh, the parking restrictions, um, that are, that were in effect during the snowstorm. And, um, just by engine, possibly looking at additional streets. Um, I I have to comment, the city, um, this last time, how the the streets were really plowed extremely well. Um, Union Street, I think they did a phenomenal job on State Street. They did a great job. Um, I I do want to bring to the attention that, um, some of the streets may not be properly signed when they're considered priority streets. So some of our residents ended up aware that they were on priority street. And I, and I, I know State Street is, is one of, one that I got a phone call on. Uh, there was an individual that had put meter in, in money on the meter, had his sticker in the front window and was due for five o'clock. Ended about four thirty, he had his car code, um, in the afternoon. So he still sent me a file on, on the meter and he ended up having to, to go get his car out. Uh, and he told me that there's no, there's no signs on State Street. Um, and I know that I had a conversation call found and he said there's a couple of other streets that, you know, they don't have the appropriate signage. So I would ask that we could, um, look into the signage and maybe we will have other streets that may, you know, the, the, the last time, I think this was done was in the early nineties. And maybe there's some streets that, um, there's been enough change and and, um, we may wanna look at making more priority streets. Um, so that when the plow trucks come around, I mean, I, I will say Union Street was beautiful. State Street was beautiful. There was not, you know, there was not the cutouts, you know, from the cars and whatnot. And I think the police did a great job. I know they used both horns and, um, tried to get people to move their vehicles. And I think it worked for the most part. I think there were still handful that were towed. But, um, at the end of the day, I think it was all in all a good experience. Um, but I just wanna make sure that we're appropriately signed in all in the streets. And also make sure that, um, there's any additional streets that we should be adding on. And I'm not sure the process in that, and I'm not sure, you know, if that's engineering or if that's, you know, the snowplow drivers would, you know, recommend or.
The designation's been, uh, put together by engineering, so largely, uh, traffic counts and providing, uh, access. So, you know, the city, uh, has shifted when GE was in its heyday. Most of the traffic was going into GE in the morning, coming out in the afternoon. The development that's occurred in the last, uh, ten years has, uh, again shifted some of those traffic patterns. So would be appropriate, maybe rethink or look at some of the, uh, designations that we have. And, uh, we can, uh, have engineering start to work on that.
I have a question, um, about the, the parking and the priority, right? You're wonderful. But some of the signs are not great. Um, and it's because there's, it's like, I'm gonna give you an example of the one, which is a pretty well-traveled street. And so people were primarily traumatized. So it essentially became a one-lane street. And and considering that, is there a way that we could, uh, perhaps, well, how would we do this today? Starting in from November into May, you have to use alternate parking. So that when the plow comes through, unless there's signs, people aren't gonna leave their car. They're just gonna leave it there. I see cars that still, um, are sitting there with no, there's no bound. So, um, it it just seems like it would just be easier for the, for the, for residents or for the snowplow people. Um, there was a guy who was coming in, um, the other day because the snowplow was trying to make up, trying to get his spot around the car. He didn't like me, so, you know, he, he didn't feel. So, um, those are concerns that we definitely don't want to have to deal with. So, you know, that, this last snowstorm, I know it's huge, well, not this last one, but the major storm. So there were a lot of the side streets that if we can just do the alternate parking, it seems to make sense.
We can look at any of those, the problems, uh, it works when there's a storm. When there's not a storm, then people want that additional on-street parking. So you may be eliminating on-street parking, uh, periods of time when you really don't have to. But we can go through and look at any of the streets, you know, see what configurations are. There's some streets, kind of, point out, uh, designated parking on just one side. But beside it, it's parking, there's a couple of firefighters. So that really if you designate the other side of the street, there would be more on-street parking. So there are those situations where, uh, what is volatile over time may not be the best configuration today. And, uh, I don't know how to do a blanket evaluation of that. But if there's any one, uh, street or area that you have, that you have specific concerns on, that we can go back and look at it and see how we might modify the parking. Or tell me about it when you have the neighbors engagement, uh, whether they will move their cars, try and get them off the street. And no matter how much we talk about it, people will still take the snow and move it back into the street after the plows have gone down. And so it's the flaw in human nature where people's, uh, actions are somewhat conflicted. It makes it a little more difficult to get us to where we all wanna be.
Well, I think people are a little concerned that sometimes the plow goes back on the sidewalk. It's been my experience, so, yeah, where if it's a.
Yep.
Fine.
But yeah, if you have any, you know, streets, areas that you want to look at, we'll, uh, do some evaluation or try and, uh, adopt it, uh, to what the current needs are.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, okay, then the next item on the agenda is a ceremonial resolution for the spin equity junior ROTC.
I think the, uh, junior ROTC at the high school, uh, won first place in the color guard competitions for twenty sixteen years. Uh, are very excited to be simply presented at first, obviously, in the.
Second. On favor? Aye. Okay. Um, I believe we need to, um, going to, did it, uh, adjourn? Do you have any other claims? Those go into executive session?
That make a motion go into executive session?
Executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
These are all claims.
Everything claimed.
Yes, executive session, okay. All right. Thank you. We're in executive session.